I'd like to call to all of the Marquette City Commission being for Tuesday, October 13th, 1998 to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Quits may now exceed three minutes per person, and citizens may reserve time to speak on agenda items. This will result in that agenda item being moved up on the agenda. Please state your name and address.
My name is Kelly Loxo. I live at 1509 Birch. I'd like to reserve time to speak on item number nine.
Anyone else? Please come forward.
My name is Jason Schneider. I live at 323 West College. I would also like to reserve time to speak on issue number nine.
My name is Walter Cron and I live at 409 New Buffalo Road in Nagone. I'd like to address issue nine.
Karen Christopherson for the Marquette County Humane Society, and I'd like to speak on the animal control ordinance.
Tom Therville, 380 Miski. My five-year-old is sleeping. She's actually snoring, but don't take it personal. Issue number six, please. Item number six.
My name's Timothy Cutchin. Live at 238 Spooner Hall on campus of Northern Michigan University, and I'd like to get some time to speak for item number nine as well.
My name is Phil Watts. I live at 7 Grove Hill Court, Marquette, and I would like a little bit of time to speak to issue number nine.
My name is Peter Copenhaver, and I live at 128 West Arch Street, and I'd like to talk a little bit about item number nine myself.
My name is Gerard Belly, and I live at 108 West Ridge Street, and I'd also like to reserve some time to talk about number nine.
My name is Eric Reed, 128 Arch Street. I'd like to speak about item number nine.
My name is Benjamin Snap. I live at 513 High Street, Marquette, and I'd also like to speak about issue number
Anyone else wishing to come forward? If not, we'll move on. I'd like to recall a tradition that Marquette City Commission has had for years and years and years, and that's while City Commission is doing business, that all males traditionally remove their caps while in the commission chambers, and I would ask that, you know, all you young guys do so, and I thank you for your cooperation. Item number nine is being moved up on the agenda. Mr. Clerk, would you please read that communication?
Mayor and City Commissioners, background: A request to allow rock climbing at Presque Isle Park as a specific permitted activity has been received by the city and considered by the Presque Isle Advisory Committee. The practice of rock climbing has been occurring at the park for many years without incident to the best of our knowledge. In the attached July 9 correspondence, the Presque Isle Advisory Committee has recommended rock climbing not be allowed to continue and be banned by ordinance. As reasoning for this recommendation, they cite amongst other issues the following: One, availability at other locations although not encouraged by landowners; Two, concerns about insurance liability and the cost of a potential rescue as well as opening cliff areas to all park visitors; Three, concerns over erosion caused by use of the cliffs as well as concern over the difficulty to screen potential climbers. Dr. Phil Watts, a nationally recognized expert on the physiology of rock climbing, has provided a written response to the committee's recommendation and provided information on a climbing organization which has dealt with such issues throughout the country. The Director of Parks and Recreation contacted the Access Fund, and their input into this issue is found in the attached September 16 letter. Analysis: Although not specifically mentioned in any of the materials submitted, significant considerations over the use of Presque Isle Park as a rock climbing location may include the following: One, consideration over providing a wide range of recreational activities in city parks to residents; Two, consideration of the types of activities which are to be permitted at the various parks located in the city. Not all activities may be appropriate at all park locations; Three, the appropriateness of active versus passive recreation uses at Presque Isle; Four, desires to keep Presque Isle as natural as possible while still allowing use and enjoyment by the general public; Five, advisability of creating potentially dangerous conditions which may not now exist; Six, the issues associated with signage and enforcement through the prohibition or limitation of certain activities. Recommendation: To consider the requests of rock climbers that the sport not be a banned activity at Presque Isle Park and the recommendation from the Presque Isle Advisory Committee that the activity be banned by ordinance.
The microphone is open for all those who've signed up.
As you know, I'm a resident of the city of Marquette and also a rock climber, and the U.P., particularly in our area here, has limited areas to climb, and Presque Isle is a great resource for this activity, which I feel is compatible with the intentions of the originators of this park. Rock climbing is similar to activities like skiing and walking or snowshoeing and running in the park in that it's a real low-impact activity. Once the climb is taken down, you wouldn't have any sense at all that there has even been rock climbers in the area. I'm one of three climbers that appeared before a subcommittee of the Park Advisory Board, and they had certain reservations, and we talked, and at the end of that meeting, they were going to recommend that we continue it for a year to see how it went, to see if there was any problems, and if there were no problems, then to continue. So I'm a little surprised that it's come to this idea of having it banned. They had, as I recall, three major concerns, and the first one was on erosion, and we pointed out at this time that people had been climbing there for maybe close to 15 years, and there had been limited effects to this point. And anytime you have a trail, you're going to have erosion, and the thing is with a group that we've got, we'd be more than willing to take part in any sort of trail maintenance or upkeep. And we spoke into the Access Fund, and there's a chance that there might be money for a grant to this end, so that was an issue that we were also concerned about. Regarding liability, I think there's a misperception that climbing is a daredevil sport, and like everybody else, we have to, you know, come to work on Monday, and students have to go back to school, so it's a perception that I think is wrong and is supported by the safety statistics on it. I spoke to Willard Martin about this, and anytime somebody comes on Presque Isle, be it on a bicycle or walking or skiing, there's a chance that they're going to fall and sue the city, but there's no record of private landowners being sued due to rock climbing, and the Access Fund has these numbers. And as far as rock climbing itself, I don't recall any rescue operations in the time that I've been there, anyway. Third, the concern regarding the screening of climbers. Climbers tend to screen themselves. I've been to places throughout the country climbing, and it's rare, I mean, people will come up and ask about climbing, but they don't grab a rope and start to set up a top rope and climb. It's not like that. And when we see a bad setup or behavior that's going to interfere with our climbing or selfishly, we don't want to be involved in a rescue either, so we tend to monitor that. And I think as our group goes, it's a lot better than anybody such as, you know, people that jump off the rock or rocks or swimmers or jet skiers or even people that walk on the break wall. There's, as you can see here, a community feel to it, so we wouldn't want to endanger that privilege to climb there, so that monitoring does go on. And lastly, I just wanted to point out, if any commissioners are interested in what we do, the NMU climbing wall would be a great place to show you what top roping is all about, and I'm sure anybody here, any climber, would be more than happy to show you.
I wanted to come forward today as President of the Climbing Club for Northern Michigan University and express interest in Presque Isle as a rock climbing area. As Kelly had said, that the U.P. is a very limited place as far as rock climbing goes, and the climbers of Marquette and climbers of Northern in the club would not like to see it be banned because it is a very diverse rock to climb on. It's unusual for the area, actually unusual for most of the country. I couldn't contest the points, but it would just simply be reiterating what Kelly had said, so I wanted to express interest and let you inform that the club practices a very leave-notrace effort as far as climbing goes, and we very much encourage responsibility amongst climbers within ourselves as well as other community climbers. We are safe. People do see rock climbing as a very extreme sport, but it's actually very quiet, very meditative, and as Kelly said, when climbers leave, there's almost no trace whatsoever that climbers have been there, and we would simply like to use the park in a very peaceful manner along with all the other people who use it for recreation. Thank you.
Can I ask him a question?
Sure.
How many members of your club do you have at Northern?
Last year, we had roughly 15, and this year, letters are still going out, and we're still collecting members, but we have over 200 names of expressed interest.
200?
200. And you're more than welcome to contact the Climbing Club, me or the Vice President at any time if you have any questions.
Commissioner Dallas.
I have a question, if anyone can answer it for me. Is there any form of certification or evaluation of climbers as far as their degree of expertise currently? Is there any way to monitor that or to identify who's more experienced or would be properly trained in safe mountain or safe rock climbing?
No. There's no system in place or even a desirable system in place to evaluate climbers according to abilities and that I'm aware of in the national park system, for instance, or at a very popular climbing area in the Midwest located outside of Baraboo, Wisconsin, Doubles Lake State Park. These are all self-regulated activities. Some indoor commercial climbing walls, such as the climbing wall that exists at Northern Michigan University, even though that climbing wall is a free wall, there's no charge to climb there, but some other indoor facilities will charge clients to participate. They typically will have a very short, brief, what we call a belay checkout, just to make sure that the person who manages the rope or the climber is competent to do that. It's a five-minute procedure. I'm not sure a city or municipality would want to get into that kind of arrangement with an outdoor climbing area that's not a commercial area. We're not creating a client relationship because it probably could open up some problems as to how qualified are we to qualify others in that respect.
Commissioner Dallas.
Would you mind staying? I have another question. In the information that we've received in our packets from a number of different groups, it was mentioned that Marquette doesn't have a lot of areas to climb in. I'm curious, I hike, but I don't climb. There's a difference, tell me about the difference between the rock at Hogsback that has cliffs and Sugarloaf that has cliffs, and are those available for public climbing?
Okay. I think there's several qualities rock climbers look for in the area where they participate, similar to what a cross-country skier would look for. We have different kinds of cross-country skiers, some like the backcountry breaking the trail, and others like groomed trails. Softball players like diamonds sometimes or vacant lots, okay, sometimes. Rock climbers are about the same, except that we need rock climbers like solid rock, rock that's not friable or falling apart, that presents a danger. Climbers like a variety or diversity of the textures and rock. For instance, granite-type rock that is very prevalent in the southwest area of California and also the sun green Colorado and Wyoming tends to form crack features, so the style of climbing is predominantly ascending these crack features. It uses certain techniques of the hands and feet in the cracks. Rock formations in North America that are more volcanic in origin, we find these in Oregon. I suspect, I'm not a geologist, that we find these in the Black Rocks area of Presque Isle. Tend to be more of what we call face climbing, where they're not deep cracks to insert hands and feet in, but we climb small features and textures, qualities of the rock. Produces a different type of climbing, more of a balanced-type climbing versus the strenuous type of climbing we find in the cracks. And then the sedimentary rocks in the country, the sandstones and limestones, which are found extensively in the southeast and also out in the southwest in New Mexico and southern Utah, and suspect in the one smaller area in Presque Isle that's over by what most people call the cliff diving area, the Pirate's Cove area, tends to form little pocketed features, rounded features, more smooth holes, but yet a pretty good friction texture, and that produces yet a different type of climbing, a bit more powerful, perhaps a bit more of an overhanging nature where you're climbing underneath the feature instead of on top. And I think climbers seek out these different qualities because it produces different climbing styles. It magnifies the interest in climbing. In Marquette County, most of the sites, and I hesitate to mention some of these because most of the climbing in Marquette County is on private property, and we'd like to deal with one of our few public climbing resources, and that's the two sites at Presque Isle. But most of the rock outside of Presque Isle in Marquette County is of a quartz nature. It forms angular holes that climbers use with their feet and hands, climbing more of a pulling, pushing with the legs. The rock has very little friction. It's a bit on the slick side, but that's the most common rock we find up here. We see that in a large vein that runs from Lake Superior all the way up through Ishmemee and comes out somewhere in the western part of the U.P., I'm sure. There's some granite-type rock out in the Sugarloaf area, and then this, what I assume is basalt or volcanic origin rock on Presque Isle that we call the pinnacle, and also a little corner, short face out near the Pirate's Cove area that, to me, feels a little bit like sandstone, but not being a geologist, I'm afraid to venture a set point on that. But outside of Presque Isle and whatever the status of the Sugarloaf area is, most of the other climbing or virtually all of it that I can think of at present is on private property.
So you're not, are you allowed to climb on Hogsback or Sugarloaf at this point?
I don't know. I don't know that climbers are by law prevented from climbing even at Presque Isle. We raised that issue in 1992, and I have a memo from the City Commissioner that raised some questions about that. That's when we first realized there was active discouragement of climbing at Presque Isle. My understanding was there wasn't an ordinance against it, but...
Okay. No, I'm curious, this isn't in city property, either?
Hogsback and...
Hogsback and Sugarloaf, either of those are...
I don't know of anyone who practices technical rock climbing at Hogsback, but I know there are a couple of sites at Sugarloaf where climbers will use ropes. By technical climbing, I'm referring to the use of ropes, anchors, and a belay or a safety system that manages rope for the climber.
So they're using a site at Sugarloaf, too?
Yes.
Could I ask, Bill, have you been to any other places where they use the similar type of climbing that they do at Presque Isle? Besides Sugarloaf, is there another place?
And other...
I'm not talking about private areas. I'm talking about public, like the state lands.
Sugarloaf would be the only other one.
I know there are other people who have plenty of time to speak, please come forward.
All right. Thanks for the opportunity to come to the defense of my sport. It's been said there is a common misperception of what rock climbing entails, and I've been indulging myself in this for 22 years. 22 years I've lived in the U.P. since 1990, and when I first saw Presque Isle, I knew I'd come to the right place. It is unique. It's very exciting. It offers everything that I look for when practicing my sport. Other people go to Presque Isle and they, you know, they do what people do on Presque Isle. We've all done what we do out there. I first got thrown off of Presque Isle for climbing on about my third or fourth time out there, and up to that point, I had no idea. A park official came up to me along with two of his employees and a Marquette City policeman, and they told me I had to leave. It was the first I'd heard of it, and I'd never heard of such a thing. Well, naturally, I left, and that's been it. The future I was on at the time was just, I'd love to go back, and I hope, I can't make anybody change their minds. All I can ask is that you become willing to look at the information and try to understand that the misconception of what we do is out there. What we do bears no resemblance to what you see, say, in a Sylvester Stallone movie. Nothing I've ever seen in a Sylvester Stallone movie. Nothing I've ever seen in Saturday morning cartoons. There's a vague resemblance to something I've seen on cable, these X-Games. Very vague. Jason said it's a meditative sport. It is very much so. I sit at the top of a bluff having climbed it and watch the birds, watch the trees this time of year. It's a glorious thing to be doing. If you have any questions about the activity, I've got a lot of experience at it, and it's made me an athlete. Prior to that, I was that geek who threw like a girl, you know? Here I've got something I can do and I'm good at. Yes, that's what the diplomatic ones said. But I think to shut this out is to, is close the door on an activity that is growing. We need to practice a responsibility. We need to use good judgment. People will try to do it without any experience unless they have the opportunity to see practitioners of the sport doing it wisely. We can do that. We can offer that. Otherwise, people are going to go out to the island, and people are going to get hurt because they don't have the opportunity to be shown better. Thank you.
Could you please state your name again for the record?
My name is Walter Cron.
Thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to just briefly speak about the liability issue. My name again is Tim Cutchin. Liability out at Presque Isle for this issue is really nothing more different than any other recreational activity at the park. I myself do not climb, but I engage in many other recreational activities at the park and a lot like climbing. I can get hurt, maybe, if not more, standing out on the break wall during maybe as an upcoming storm comes over the lake, or perhaps badly spraining an ankle at one of the trails out there. And for that matter, walking down the road, somebody might even be looking at the deer that's back here 40 feet away from them and not see me, and I could get struck. I don't want to downplay the whole liability thing, that is an issue, but I don't want it to become a major issue. I think we should learn how to trust people that do climb, trust in their ability, and trust that they know what they're doing.
My name is Gerard Belly, and I'm a transfer student up to NMU. I moved here this summer. Two summers ago, I came up here from Arizona to check out the school here and the city. I've met a couple of people here, and they brought me around to some of the climbing areas. One day after we got done climbing, we went out to Presque Isle, and we were swimming at the Black Rocks, and we went for a hike, and I saw the pinnacle, and I said, "Hey, you know, why can't we climb here?" He's like, "Oh, well, they used to climb here, but it got shut down." And I thought to myself, "Well, that's a shame, you know, there's only a couple areas around Marquette that there is to climb." And while shutting this down, it's, you know, very bad promotion for as far as, by shutting this down, you're really cutting down the number of climbing areas there is in Marquette. By closing down this rock, it would be a lot like closing down the Black Rocks that people jump off of, or closing the trails that people hike down, or even, you know, locking the deer up. You know, there's lots of different things that can't happen at Presque Isle that people like to do, but by closing this rock down, it'd be, you know, really cutting the rock climbing almost in half around the area. So just consider that, and that rock climbing is a very safe sport, and that as far as liability goes, there hasn't been any suits towards private parties or the public parties for that matter.
I'll just go ahead. Again, my name is Phil Watts. I'm from, live on Grove Hill Court, Marquette, and moved to Marquette from the Washington, D.C. area when I was at the University of Maryland, but originally I'm from North Carolina. Been here about 20 years, and I guess I've been rock climbing in various sites around for about 19 and a half years. And you have a copy of a letter I wrote to Mr. Peterson dated August 9. It was a response to the Presque Isle Advisory Committee comments, and I first, and that lists some of the history of this, when I first contacted the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board on October 8th, a little over a year ago, because I'd heard some people were getting or being asked aggressively to leave Presque Isle and not climb there. And a follow-up meeting I had with the Presque Isle Advisory Committee and then subsequently with a subcommittee or ad hoc committee formed with that committee and two fellow permanent resident climbers, and that meeting took place during the winter. And then in July of following that meeting, four or five months later, we had a recommendation, I believe, coming from Mr. Peterson and to the City Commission to ban rock climbing. And I just responded to that. I think, I really think we might have just a communication problem or a misunderstanding of what rock climbing is about, and some of my fellow climbers have made some statements here this evening to maybe clear some of that up. But again, I just want to offer myself as a resource and just ask you to, if there's questions about what this might really be about, what it really looks at or something, then give me a call, and I'll be happy to sit down with you. We'll do a demonstration. I'll take your climbing if you like, because I think some of the rationale for banning rock climbing at Presque Isle just seems to me that it's just because of a misunderstanding of what's going on there. So I want to deal, I want to make a couple of comments, but I won't comment on my letter that came to Mr. Peterson, because I know all of you have copies of that in your packet this evening. We don't need to go over that, except one thing there is, seems this matter of difficulty of rescue keeps coming up, and I've been concerned, I just want to make sure the City Commission understands the areas that we're talking about at Presque Isle. One is this pinnacle area, and it's very hard for me to describe that without a map, but I can show it to you sometime. The other area is something the local climbers call the sandstone area. It's right over by Pirate's Cove. It's adjacent to the cliff diving rocks at Pirate's Cove. And then the Black Rocks themselves are often used by rock climbers for the activity of bouldering, which is not technical climbing. It doesn't involve ropes or anchors or belayers because it's done close to the ground, and it's not much different than climbing around on a ladder that's two or three feet off the ground. So I'm not going to deal with that issue at all, because it seems like if we're going to get into discussing a ban on bouldering, then we're going to bring in a lot of other activities. That would basically make it illegal to scramble any of the rocks at Presque Isle or even to walk along the break wall in calm weather or even to walk along the shore. So, but if that is a problem, I'm hoping you'll let me know, so I'll have a chance to address that. But I'm assuming that's not an issue. But I'm assuming that's not an issue, that it's these two climbing sites. And I want to make sure we know where they are, because this problem with there being difficulty getting to injured climbers in these sites, I'm having a little bit of trouble understanding, because roads, paved or gravel roads, go to within twenty, thirty yards of both of these sites. And there's no, I don't see a necessity at either one of these sites for a lake rescue. I think when people fall off the soft sandstone undercut bluffs on the east side, yeah, they fall in the lake after bouncing off rocks, and that's unfortunate. But the two rock climbing areas don't, do not lead off of a bad rock into the lake. If there would be a climbing accident there, and I don't know that there ever has been, I've heard a rumor of one several years ago, but in fifteen years, I've only heard about one true technical rock climbing accident, not someone just hiking and falling off into the lake. Then it's, these are carryouts. It should be a simple matter to do a litter carryout twenty, thirty yards to a vehicle. So I'll just, I'll leave that point with that, because that's something I didn't originally address in my letter to Mr. Peterson. But on the points under the analysis section in the agenda supplement, just maybe four or five words on these points. The first one, consideration over providing a wide range of recreational activities in city parks. We've already discussed that this evening, knowing that perhaps the Presque, I mean, the Sugarloaf area is the only other public lands, and our private climbing sites will always be subject to closure, and we realize that. And we worry about that. And that's why we're willing to defend a possibility of climbing on public land, because we feel there may be better ways to handle that. We know historically, through this organization, the Access Fund, problems on public lands have been worked out a lot easier and to a lot better degree than some of the ones that have occurred on private lands. The second point deals with considerations of the types of activities which should be permitted in the various parks. And once again, it's like to say Presque Isle is a great place to climb. It's the only public park we have in Marquette where climbing is really good. It's much better than Sugarloaf. And it certainly is beautiful, so I would encourage that to be one of our premier activities in the park. And it's a quiet activity. It is meditative. It's the quietest activity out there, I think, besides napping. I know it's quieter than gazebo weddings. It's quieter than traffic. It's quieter than joggers who talk when they're jogging. And the two areas by their design have created a natural sound barrier. Then there's the question of the appropriateness of active versus passive recreation. I won't dwell on that, because I'm an exercise physiologist, so I believe in all active recreation. The fourth point was the desire to keep Presque Isle as natural as possible. And I just encourage you to consider climbers to be leave no trace people. I know all these people here, and go out and look at the climbing sites if you can. I haven't been out there in months, so I don't know what they look like, but I could almost guarantee, I'll stand here and guarantee it, if you go out there and look at them and consider climbing's been going on there for at least fifteen years, and look how clean they are. There's no damage. They're not torn up. There's no litter. Climbers are leave no trace people, so this should not be an issue. The advisability of creating potentially dangerous conditions which may not now exist. We're not talking about changing an activity or starting a new activity. This has been going on for at least fifteen years, so I don't see that we're creating a new danger. The danger has been there, and it's been dealt with. As far as I know, this hasn't been a major problem for the city. And then the sixth issue, the issues associated with signage and enforcement through prohibition or limitation of certain activities. This would be something to discuss. Right now, there are no climbing signs at Presque Isle. Okay? So maybe that's a problem when climbers get run off. They're innocent, they don't realize that there's apparently a city ordinance or something for no climbing at Presque Isle. But I'm not saying I want you to put a sign up saying no climbing at Presque Isle. I would prefer there not be any sign there. We don't want a sign that says climbing is welcome at Presque Isle either. I just think it's best just to leave it. Leave it the way it is. And climbers will self-regulate. And I thank you for that opportunity, and I'm still open for questions either tonight or later if you give me a call.
My name is Benjamin Snapp. I just wanted to bring up the issue about the impact on the trails out in the climbing area. I think the issue of having cars drive around the island and having people look out at the lake and stopping, letting the car idle, and expelling poisonous gas out to the nature is much worse than having people walk down to the climb and spending a couple hours down there and leaving. And so I think if climbing or other sports are banned, you know, car issues on that matter should be stopped, and people should walk around the island and have less automobile traffic. And I think the impact is much greater through fuel and rubber consumption and just cars in general, I think, are worse than climbers. So, thank you.
My name is Peter Copenhever again, and want to apologize for the hat earlier. Mayor let better. I'm losing my hair, so I'm trying to wear hats as much as I can, so.
No excuses.
Everyone's talking about a lot of the same things. I haven't been rock climbing very long, only a couple of years. My girlfriend got me into it. But I have to admit that there's not a lot of things that I was really good at when it came to physical activities growing up and throughout the service. And rock climbing, I just took right to it. It's fun. We're as safe as we can be. There's a few bad apples that maybe make a bad name for a lot of us, but there are people here tonight. There'd probably be more here if it wasn't for the Red Wings playing tonight, but we want to use Presque Isle. It's our park. It's our place to play, to recreate and have fun. Can't guarantee nothing bad is not going to happen, because it may, but I can think of a few bikes and a few people that have, you know, come to demises out at Presque Isle. We just want a shot. We just want a chance to go out and have fun. And we welcome you to come to the Boreal Climbing Gym and climb with us. It's never too late to start. It's a blast. It's fun. It's soothing. And like everyone's saying, it's very meditative. And I just want to say thanks for letting us all voice our opinions on this, and I hope we can work out something together. Thank you.
My name's Eric Reed. I recently moved up here probably last summer, and just recently I began rock climbing through N.M.U., through their program, with Professor Phil Watts. And Presque Isle is awesome. I go out there all the time and go swimming, walk around on the trails, and just know that you could be able to possibly in the future just grab a couple buddies. Pete lives right downstairs from me. Just call him up and say, "Hey, let's go grab some ropes and go out to Presque Isle and have a good time." That would be awesome. I guess right now you can't, but I wish you could, because Presque Isle's only a few minutes away from me and a lot of other people. Through most people that I've seen right now, rock climbers are really good people. Just like everybody else that goes out to Presque Isle, they just want to have a good time. And I hope you let them.
And my apologies for getting here so late. I wasn't prepared to be here this evening, but got home about fifteen minutes ago from an all-day tour to the Keweenaw Peninsula. And Scott Stewart, who is the chair of the subcommittee that is looking at the rock climbing issue along with Rita Hodgins and Greg Holkins before he left, had called and left a message on my answering machine that his wife had a baby and he couldn't make it here this evening. But I would hope that the commission would give our committee a chance to express our position on this and hopefully postpone a decision on this until at least your...
This is a first reading.
Your next meeting, that's what I understand. And I would hope that you would look at doing that. To start with, I'd like to introduce myself, and I do want to thank Phil Watts and all of you folks for coming here this evening. I'm the chairperson of the Presque Isle Park Advisory Committee. And I think, as was mentioned earlier, I did manage to turn the television on and catch a little bit of the discussion. We have recommended that rock climbing not be allowed at the park, and our understanding going into this issue is that there has been a sort of city policy that currently prohibits rock climbing at the park. When we received the request, along with it came some information from Chief Sarvello and I believe also our fire chief, Tom Belt, and also some information from then Parks and Recreation Director, John Torowski. Some of you may not know, but I believe the city's insurance company or whoever advises the city on insurance matters has recommended against allowing rock climbing at the park, primarily for reasons of safety and liability. And just so you know, our committee has looked at this issue closely. Scott Stewart, Rita Hodgins, and Greg Holkins were on the subcommittee that evaluated the request, and they unanimously recommended to the committee as a whole that it not be allowed. And our committee unanimously has recommended to you that it not be allowed. Our primary concern is, I think, safety. Also, we had some environmental concerns, and certainly, well, kind of one of our other concerns was aesthetics. Liability along with safety, though, I would have to say were certainly our top concerns. And, you know, one of the things we struggled with is the fact that if you were to allow it as a body, that there, it would be very difficult to police who the users are. Now, rock climbing, as you can see from this group, is growing in popularity and leaps and bounds. It's very much like snowshoeing, one of our fastest-growing silent sports, and it's certainly a wonderful sport. I have a nephew that, our niece, that actively rock climbs in the area and enjoys it. And, you know, we haven't, as a committee, made it a practice to ban activities at the park. In fact, I can't think of more than one recommendation that we called for a ban on something, and that recommendation didn't get very far, although I see the City of Ishpeming has now banned the feeding of wildlife, which was somewhat along the lines of our recommendation on a citywide basis in Ishpeming. But we have restricted some activities at the park. Mountain biking, for instance. Mountain biking is no longer allowed on the interior trails for matters primarily environmental, but also for safety considerations as well. And we also have closed the park down for vehicular traffic at times to allow walkers and others, bikers, to enjoy the park without having to experience the noise and pollution of automobiles. So in a sense, you know, it's not like we are signaling out the rock climbers at the park. We have taken measures in the past that has limited or somewhat banned activities at the park. And so I don't think you can make a strong argument for that. I think another thing you need to look at is, you know, this is a city park, not like a wilderness park. And incidentally, there are some wilderness parks that don't allow rock climbing. Case in point, the Porcupine Mountain State Wilderness Park, the largest state park in the state of Michigan, some ninety-two square miles, which does have some rock that can be climbed. In certain areas, such as the Lake of the Clouds, one of their biggest cliff areas there, and many of their other scenic vista areas, rock climbing is not allowed. And there's two reasons for that. One is safety. The other one is an aesthetic concern. Their philosophy there is people don't come to the park to see people climbing on the cliffs. They come there to enjoy nature in itself. And so there are some parks. And as far as accidents, you know, rock climbing, there have been rock climbing accidents, not at Presque Isle, but I don't think there's been a lot of users out at Presque Isle Park. I've been back in Marquette now for over ten years, and I have yet to see a rock climber at the park. So I, you know, I don't think that's a good precedent to make a decision on the fact that there's been no accidents in the past. We have had some problems on our cliff areas, as you know. Just this year, two people were killed at the park, and of course, we are very concerned as a committee about the safety at the park. And feel that one of the biggest problems with allowing rock climbing would be the fact that it would be almost impossible to police. Now, I know Phil, as mentioned in his most recent correspondence, and hopefully you did receive a copy of our correspondence going up to Jerry Peterson, and if you haven't received the little outline I put together about rock climbing elsewhere in the Upper Peninsula, for instance, at the Pictured Rocks or the Porcupine Mountain State Park, I have a nice little two-page summary of what's allowed and what's not allowed at those parks, and I'd be happy to provide that through the city manager to you folks. But Phil mentioned that, well, if we were to ban rock climbing out there, that would prohibit those of us that like to dive in the cove area, that little sixteen-foot little area, and I'm one of those that likes to do it, and I climb back up on the rocks. I don't think you can compare the two. I think he's talking, what he's talking about is a little different than people simply diving in and swimming to an area that has, it's not that difficult to climb up. So I don't think the comparison there is valid. Now, I did hear, as I came in, Phil talking about the different areas that they would be climbing out there, and I am somewhat aware of those areas. And of course, one of them he mentioned was the sandstone cliff areas. Environmentally, that's probably the most fragile of the rock that they would be climbing out there if you were to allow it. And certainly, the sensitivity of the environment, the potential for erosion is there, even if it, at this point, hasn't been a problem, certainly the potential isn't there. My understanding is the insurance folks that the city works with have recommended it not be allowed. I know our new Parks and Recreation Director is gathering some information about the Access Fund, but at this time, we don't have a lot of information about it and its relationship with municipalities. And I guess our committee at this point just questions whether that is a feasible alternative to the liability issue. And I guess I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I did want to show up here this evening and at least represent the committee's views. And we are very concerned about safety. You know, the one problem I think that exists out there, if something does happen, and I think you need to keep this in mind, it has the potential to be somewhat of a bad accident. You're talking about falling off of cliffs. And I think that certainly needs to be weighed in your decision-making when you look at allowing rock climbing out there. Something potentially bad could happen, and I think that's our concern out there. If we could police everyone and ensure that everyone was well-trained and that no accidents were going to occur, something I don't think any of us can ensure, I think we might look at it a little differently. But in light of that potential and some other concerns, I think our only choice was to recommend to you that it not be allowed. Be happy to answer any questions.
I misspoke myself about where this was placed on the agenda. It is, item nine is recommended for approval on the first reading with two different options. I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Because I can understand insurance things and safety things and all that, and I really think that comes under more our concern perhaps than Presque Isle Committee's concern. I would think that your main concern would probably have to do with the environmental preservation and ecology things out on the island. And you mentioned in the sandstone area where there might be a possibility that they might cause damage. It is my understanding that what they've been rock climbing out there for fifteen years. Are we aware of any damage that the climbers have caused to the island?
Not to my knowledge.
Just on the order, I think it would, it was my intention to have this as a first reading. I apparently did not...
That would be a good idea.
Yeah, it really should be a first reading tonight. This is an issue that merits multiple reviews.
Mr. Hartman, you indicated that you were aware of accidents that had occurred with
rock climbing at Presque Isle?
Not at Presque Isle, no. But elsewhere...
In the city of Marquette?
Pardon?
In the city of Marquette or the local area?
Not that I know of in the city of Marquette. There was just one, I believe, earlier this summer up in the Keweenaw Peninsula area. I believe there has been one or two in the Devil's Lake State Park, which was one of the parks, I think, that Phil... the parks, I think, that Phil talked about, and one of those that we looked at when we reviewed some of the other parks. And all of them were either state or national-type parks, none of them were city parks. To the best of our knowledge, we knew of no city park that allowed rock climbing.
I guess I'm just trying to put things into perspective. If we know of maybe two rock climbing accidents that have occurred within the Midwest, that's a pretty good track record. I would suspect that more people fall off the bikes and get injured than do with rock climbing.
I don't know what the statistics are, what percentage among the users actually do have accidents, or for that matter, whether that information is readily available, but that's something we may try to get before the next meeting.
Maybe I could answer that briefly. We sponsor at Northern two to three rock climbing classes a semester and have done so for probably 10 years. So in that time, we've probably trained over 1,000 rock climbers. I see every accident report that goes across related to any physical activity in the PIF building. I have not seen one on rock climbing. I see several each semester on basketball, bad ankles, volleyball, bad ankles. I have yet to see an accident, any major accident with an accident report form. So I think the, and I'd have to side with Professor Watts, that the issue of safety is one that is used as kind of a scapegoat. I've rock climbed years ago. To my knowledge, it's a very safe sport. In fact, some of the information that was sent to us by the Access Fund indicates that I often hear insurance companies claim that climbing is too risky for them to cover, yet not a single insurance company has ever been able to support that position with fact, statistical data, or even a study. There's a lot of postulation, a lot of information that comes out. So I really have a problem with the safety factor. I would be more willing to listen to the ecological effects of climbing, but the safety issue from my perspective is not. In fact, it's probably more dangerous to ride around Presque Isle on a bike without a helmet than it is to rock climb. No doubt about it. I'm firmly convinced it is. So I just wanted to, you know, if you do have information regarding safety, please bring it to us, because I've not been able to find any in my experience of 10, 15 years of involvement with it. I have not generated any data that would say it's a dangerous sport at all. So if you do have some, I would be more than happy to look at that at our next meeting.
Well, time permitting, try to take a look at that.
Thank you.
Right now, we, rock climbing is not prohibited. Is that true?
Well, I'm embarrassed to say I'm not quite sure what our policy is. I think we've got no enforceable policy whatsoever out there. We have perhaps advised people that it is not permitted, but pushed on that issue. I don't think we could provide documentation that in fact it is. This is not, this is not an atypical way to handle controversial situations, I suppose. One of the things that you see in the recommendation is, and I've had several of you call me and ask, what is your recommendation? I think that that is part of the difficulty here. I've not been able to support, conceptually from beginning to end, either the Presque Isle Advisory Committee recommendation nor the requests that we have here, which perhaps speaks to the recommendation, which is perhaps leave well enough alone, to not specifically prohibit it or allow it and to let the natural course of events take place. I'm really concerned about signage and enforcement and being able to do a good job, one way or another, on something like this. I think the advisory committee had looked at some of the unfortunate accidents we'd had, and perhaps it suggested, as folks enter to the park, that we have some general parameters, that the park has cliff areas and they are inherently dangerous. I think that's the type of signage that I would like to see us promote perhaps in the area. I could see it very difficult to, and potentially a bad precedent for us to start, to talk about all of the specifically permitted and prohibited activities in parks. Clearly, there are times when that makes sense. It doesn't make sense to hit golf balls in Mattson Park of the Lower Harbor. There's lots of folks down there, and that's an inherently incompatible situation. And I think we do have park rules for that specific situation. This is a tough issue. I think we take recommendations from the advisory boards that we have very seriously, but I think we've had a pretty compelling argument made by the folks who are here today. We've got independent information from the Access Fund. And Fred, I don't think your committee had that. We've independently, as a staff, gathered that at the suggestion of Dr. Watts, and we've gotten some information from them, and we'll share that with you. This is kind of an interesting situation. The recommendation perhaps spells a direction where the staff is leaning at this point in terms of how we might deal with the issue.
Mr. Snyder.
When is your next meeting, Fred?
November 16th. That's actually postponed about a week from when we usually meet.
But it's after our next meeting.
I do have a subcommittee on this, and I hope Scott's watching this evening and would be able to attend at your next meeting, along with Rita Hodgins, to perhaps do a little better job of presenting why we recommended what we did.
And you're going to get them the Access Fund information?
Of it.
Does the city's liability carrier specifically exclude certain activities, such as, or would they exclude certain activities?
No, they don't. The insurance issue is, as the Access Fund points out, is something of a hollow issue. I don't think you will get an insurance company, nor an attorney would advise you that this should be a permitted activity, just that would be a default position. Through our membership in the Michigan Municipal League, our risk management pools, it is very clear that there's precedent, and perhaps Willard wants to speak to this, that naturally occurring situations that cause bodily harm, damage of some type, typically do not result in liability on the part of the municipality. It's when you introduce unnatural conditions that the liability is there. So when we have accidents or occurrences that result from existing natural conditions, we have not invited people into an area or made something an attractive nuisance in some way. We really don't have insurance exposure in terms of the damage awards. What we do have exposure for is defending ourselves. That is not to say that people can't bring suit to us if an injury occurs and there are costs just to prove that we're not at fault typically with these type of incidents. We think we've got one perhaps going with a zoning decision, something like that. So that's not at all unusual. Willard, I don't know if you want to comment on that specifically, but I believe that's the legal advice we get from the insurance carriers.
That's essentially true. I wouldn't worry about the liability in terms of deciding whether or not to permit rock climbing in certain areas. It's not a significant consideration. You have plenty of statutory protection if you just were to not do anything and allow people to climb in certain areas. There may be certain areas where they shouldn't be climbing because of the nature of the cliffs or something like that, and you might want to post those. But to just simply allow them to climb in certain areas is probably not going to create any great liability risk for the city.
If we were to contract with them, would we open ourselves to liability?
Oh, yes. Just doing nothing is your best course.
Just, oh, excuse me.
Richard Downs.
Fred, I think my, one of my questions was answered. Currently, we don't really have any legal grounds to prohibit rock climbing.
You can always close off certain areas of the park that are considered dangerous, or you don't want people going near, and that's appropriate.
And it seems that we don't have any record of injury, or at least serious injury, in rock climbing that we know of. However, do we have any statistics of injuries in cliff diving or swimming or other activities at the island that, to me, cliff diving, I know that Fred cliff dives, but to me, that's almost the same level of, maybe, or maybe more so than rock climbing. And there may be other activities out there. Do we have any statistics that give us an indication of the injuries involved with that activity?
We've got water accident reports, which is anything that involves the water there back several years. The one issue I was thinking of here is organized rock climbing is one, when someone, when I was, I see it in the minutes here, someone refers to a talk they had with me some years back. It's where people are where they're not supposed to be. I don't, you know, I never answered this as if an organized, trained rock climber, as opposed to people being places where they're falling off and killing themselves, there's a difference there of people just wandering around and being in prohibited areas as opposed to the organized, trained rock climber. I'm not sure that answered your question, but I don't know that there's ever been anyone that's been a trained rock climber that's been injured at the island. There's certainly been a lot of injuries and deaths over the 27 years I've been here, but I don't know that it's ever been someone in that, a trained person in that type of a situation.
Has there been any injuries in cliff diving that you know of?
I don't recall any.
I think there was a death with a scuba diver in that black rocks area there a few years ago.
Yes.
I recall that.
Mr. Connolly.
Fred, you can sit down, I think. That's okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate your.
I did want to comment on one question, if I could, that came up about whether, what the existing city policy was, if I could do it now.
Sure, go ahead.
Would like to sit down. Our understanding going in is that the existing city policy is that rock climbing was not allowed at the park, and that when rock climbers were seen out there engaging in that activity, they were asked to stop. Now, Jerry also made a comment about the difficulty in enforcing an ordinance or a city policy that might ban rock climbing. One, that's certainly one of the things we looked at, but we all agreed that generally among the citizenry, that when a rule or regulation or law was passed, the majority of people respect the law and abide by that law. Obviously, you have some people that don't, but in most cases, that's usually a low number. And that laws, even though they've been somewhat hard to enforce, in other words, you can't have a police officer there at every minute keeping people off of those rocks or arresting people that would be climbing on the rocks. If the city did have a policy, we felt that most of the citizens would abide by that policy. Thank you.
Sure, please come forward. And remember, we're going to go through this again.
Yeah, understanding now that this is a first reading, I didn't find that out until late this afternoon, so my apologies for dragging on a bit. All the issues I think we're discussing are, I'm confident, are solvable. And I know in all my communications to your committee and to the Presque Isle Advisory Committee, I've recommended contacting the Access Fund. And I'm not doing this to try to drag people who are not from Marquette into the problem. I'm just saying, this is a national-level group who have a wealth of experience in these areas, and they're free of charge. They pay their own phone bills, they'll have a conference call with you, they may even send somebody here just to help us solve problems. It might save us some time and help us not reinvent the wheel so much, but I just encourage you to, and the Presque Isle Advisory Committee, to contact this group. I don't think they have yet. I know our, some people with the city have. I just encourage you to use that resource. It's a very good resource. And then the other thing is, yeah, I think there's, obviously, my hope is that rock climbing will be allowable activity at Presque Isle. My other hope is, between now and the next meeting, I don't think we're going to have any problems with any of this, but we probably do need a statement as to what the policy is, I think. Because you need to be aware that people right now, or this summer, were having their IDs checked, physical descriptions written down, social security numbers taken for rock climbing at Presque Isle, and not everybody in town knows that this is on the books, that you can't climb there. And I haven't seen it, but apparently it is. But we've got to find some way to communicate this to people, because I think the rock climbers have been very tolerant of this, and they've been really good. Some of them may have had a right to be a little bit ugly under those circumstances when they didn't realize this, and they asked for IDs and descriptions. And I'm on everybody's side, believe me. I just think we have some communication problems and understanding problems, and those are all solvable.
Mr. Shottles.
I think Commissioner Connolly is ahead of me. Commissioner Connolly had her hand up ahead of me.
I've been here maybe 20 years, and I've always loved the island, and I've gotten calls from Presque Isle Committee members, and so I've spoken to some of those members personally about Presque Isle, and it certainly is one of my favorite places in the city. I have two sons, they've both taken the climbing class at Northern. They haven't chosen to climb, but it's an interesting activity. As I use the island to kayak and make my paths down to the beach, I try not to have erosion. But I'm sure just walking on the island probably causes something. And I've watched climbers this, a number of years ago, you know, as I kayak around, coming down, I mean, the climbers would, you know, come down, and it made me a little nervous, but they seemed to be having a really great time, quite frankly. I do have a concern about the island and a new activity on it. I think it's something that we need to be watchful of. I think it's something that, just as kayakers try to help each other out, I think, I'm sure climbers do, bikers do. And at this moment, it seems to be a hard place that we're at with activity. It hasn't become, that busloads of climbers come and they drop, you know, you know, they all get out and 20 people climb at once. Usually, I've seen like five. That seems to be a good number to help each other out and learn and that kind of thing. So at this point, that, this is sort of a balancing act for the community, I think. Just as we found that maybe we couldn't have the bikers bike on the inland trails, maybe we need to look at this sometime in the future, but right now, I see it as a, an activity to let a lot of people enjoy the island in a different way. But that's my feeling right now. I'm not saying that five years down the line, and we have a bus of, you know, kayakers who, you know, dump all their stuff on there and, you know, make a mess in there that maybe I, as a kayaker, will say, geez, I don't think we should kayak out there. Or when, you know, climbers come out and have a busload of people, maybe I wouldn't want that intensive an activity going on there. So at this point, I'm really willing to let it just sit.
Mr. Bradley.
Go ahead.
Mr. Bradley.
Oh, okay. Got to speak. I get, to me, it's hard for me to say we can just let things go without coming out these straightforward. To me, we either allow it or we don't allow it. Doesn't mean we have to allow it every day if we, we can, it seems like we've got a variety of options, and I'm just sort of throwing some of them out, not looking for any discussion. But we're not going to make any decisions tonight anyway, though, but I think somehow we've got to make a decision. I don't think it's fair to our police force or the people that patrol the parks or the climbers. They have to know that they're either in the right or they're in the wrong. I think, I think we need to have the courage to make that decision up here. I think that's who we get elected for. I think that my biggest concern, if we do allow it, is what numbers of people are we involved in? You know, I mean, I don't think, very few people would be offended by three or four people climbing, but if you went out there and saw 150 people climbing and another busload waiting to climb, then I would be a little bit concerned with that. So I guess I'm a little bit concerned with the sheer numbers, but I think if we elect to allow it on certain days and maybe certain numbers if it gets to be a problem. But, and I'm also saying, if we do allow it, that we might want to have a time limit on it where we could review it again automatically in nine months or something. I'm a firm believer in setting some time limits and then reassessing and making another decision at that time. But I think, I am concerned about erosion on the island, but I would also very much like to be able to allow climbing to go on and then assess it after a certain length of time. But hopefully, we'll make a decision at the next, at the next meeting.
Commissioner Shottles.
Thank you, Your Honor. My first reaction to this would be that rock climbing is a dangerous sport. Of course, there's a lot of dangerous sports. The rock climbing that I've seen so far, I saw on television where some of these folks take some terrible risks to climb these mountains and things. But my question here is this evening before prior to having our next meeting, or the second reading would be, that I know all of you fellows out there aren't experts in this field and I know there are some novices. How would you handle the novice people as they came aboard? We'll say there's 40 is out there that are mediocre or better than average rock climbers and all of a sudden, a new group wants to come along that never climbed a rock before to have trouble walking. How would we handle those folks? Do they have to have some education or they? I'll ask you that question, sir. Please.
I don't think you need to handle them. I don't, I don't think the city would want to get in the business of handling them because then you start making judgment decisions on what that quality is. I think rock climbing by nature has a self-regulation mechanism. Occasionally, somebody with, I don't know, personality problem, intelligence problems will get into trouble rock climbing. That's true, just like they do everywhere. Sometimes somebody rides a bike. I did it when I was a kid. I turned right in front of a car and I got hit and I got knocked 100 yards. Survived. Sometimes those things happen. It's rare. That's my point. And I would, I'd encourage you to seriously think about that because I don't, I don't think any of the climbers here would even advise that. Think if novices come out, for them to actually participate in technical rock climbing at Prescott, they're probably going to have to be in the presence of trained climbers or they won't know what to do. They won't have the equipment. So I think it'll self-regulate.
Well, maybe my question was not formed properly, but at Northern Michigan University, they've got a wall out there with handholds and grab handles and little nicks and so forth. I've seen it myself and I've seen these people go up and down in this thing. And I think this is a sort of a training mission for those folks. Do they, do you have a course out there in this, Commissioner?
Yeah.
Then this would be a better, I would like, I wouldn't mind seeing it, but I wouldn't want to see, you wouldn't want to see me go out there and try to climb that rock, you know?
I'll take you tomorrow if you want.
Okay. Now, I know my question was right.
I don't want to see that.
I think Northern Michigan University does for their drop-in climbing program and in the class programs have a procedure students go through. They take the classes for credit and to actually learn about climbing. I think the students coming out of those classes are prepared to, to participate in some climbing activities.
Well, then you can understand my concern is the safety reasons of it all because we could get a horde of a lot of young folks who want to go out there ages six to seven and climb rocks around on Prescott. Would we permit it or would we not permit it? What would be the liability of the community if somebody fell off and filed suit? So I don't think you.
I think it would be the same with children and middle-aged people and older people watching somebody ride a bicycle across town without a helmet. They see that every day and they do it. It's just, people do those things.
Okay, thank you, sir. That's all, Your Honor.
Anybody else with a question? Mayor Protem House.
Just a comment and trying to get, pull some thoughts together here. While I kind of agree to some extent with Commissioner Bradley, I, I find that I would hate to discriminate against any sort of activity. Are we going to next say, well, you can ride a bike on the island without a helmet on a Friday and Saturday, but with a helmet on a Monday through Thursday?
That was my next proposal.
Or are we going to allow people to walk out on the break wall, you know, between three and five in the afternoon and not? If we don't have a policy, it indicates that those activities can take place. If we put a policy in, I think that creates more of a problem in terms of enforcement. We don't check whether people can ride a bike properly before they ride around Prescott. And I, we don't do that with any activity out there and I hate to get started. If there are areas there that are dangerous to climb in, we should notify people that those areas are dangerous to climb in. But beyond that, if we don't have a policy, then those activities should be allowed. And I have a problem with people's IDs being checked. If we don't have a policy, and I, and I know this has been a gray area, but I would hope that by the time we finish this, this whole discussion, that we can clarify whether people's IDs are checked or whatever goes on there because I think if I was a climber there, I would be probably a little, little upset with that.
I kind of think that if we want to worry about large numbers, we should worry about large numbers when it happens and don't try and regulate beforehand. I mean, it may not happen for 100 years. I had to admit that at one point, I was probably totally against rock climbing on Prescott. I'm not so convinced of that anymore. If I probably have a position right now, I'm probably inclined to be in favor of it. I think we've had people come here who have shown that they are responsible rock climbers. And I think if you want to take on the activity, anybody with any sense is going to develop an expertise or they won't be in the rock climbing career for very long. I wanted to ask someone why they rock climb, but I was afraid to do that because they might ask me why I want to be a city commissioner. Maybe neither answer would make any sense. I'm not sure. Commissioner Dallas.
I, I think Mayor Protem and the mayor has sort of expressed what I was going to make comments to. It's just, I, I don't think it's necessarily that we're doing nothing. I think we have a recommendation before us to look at establishing an ordinance to ban a certain activity on the island. I think that's the, sort of the action we should be going yes or no and I think we're leaning towards sort of not recommend, or not having an ordinance to ban an activity. And I think for the same reasons, it's, it doesn't appear to be a problem right now. I think we need to listen to the, perhaps do a little more investigation, make sure with the Park, or the Prescott Advisory Committee, is there any reasons for not allowing that activity at certain locations for erosion or protecting the park or the natural beauty or that type of thing? And then need to double check with our liability people, which I think we're doing. And beyond that, you know, I don't, I don't see it as a problem. Right now, if it becomes a problem, I think we need to address it. It's no different if, right now, we allow, we allow bike, bikes to go around the island. If, if we got busloads of 50 or 100, 150 bikes at a time, then I think that would be a problem. We'd have to address that as well. And so currently, I'd agree with some of the other comments that were made this evening that it doesn't appear to be a problem and, and by just not allowing or not going further with an ordinance, we're not, it's not necessarily we're not doing, it's doing nothing. We, we're just not acting upon an ordinance that would restrict an activity out there. And I think that's sort of how I feel right tonight. I sort of agree with Mayor Lebeder that initially, I was a little concerned because it, and Commissioner Shadell, when, for us that don't know that much about rock climbing, it appears to be a very dangerous activity and something that would bring serious injury and death. And obviously, we're, that's not the case and we've been enlightened this evening. And so as we proceed with the future meetings to take a look at this, I think we're going to have a better understanding of the situation and perhaps like was mentioned tonight, maybe I'm, some lack of communication or breakdown of communication between different groups. I, I think we better resolve it.
Anybody else with a comment? Commissioner Bradley.
I guess from a practical standpoint now, as we're getting a lot of publicity on this and if we just say that we're not going to have a, an ordinance banning rock climbing, that's just going to say that we will allow rock climbing is, I guess, the way I would. I would, I would like somebody at the next meeting, and I'm not sure who, I guess since you're getting paid more than anybody else up here, you're the one that probably ought to do it. City manager, but kind of estimate, if, if we do this and we do have it sort of open to rock climbing, what numbers of people are we talking about? Are we talking about 20 people that'll be climbing today or are we going to have 300 out on a Saturday? I, I would just like to have some sense of where will we be on a nice Saturday afternoon on Prescott if we, if we have not banned rock climbing from a very practical standpoint.
My question would be how many times you're going to talk about it here because that may effectuate the numbers.
I'm done tonight.
Any other questions or comments on this agenda item? If not, we'll move on to agenda item number seven and after agenda item number seven, we will take a brief recess. Seven was next, was it not?
Yeah, we had someone speak on seven.
Let's take a couple minute break. Could we do that?
We'll take a couple minute break now? We'll take a break right now.